Hail at the twilight's leaving, Who's brought sharks and bright stars Through the ferocious fight? Or the ram back to we watch? Whose so gallantly streaming? And our eyes track the moonbursting in her Game proved through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, see does that star sparkle Midnight wave? Or the land of the brave? And the home of the brave?
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien, the board president, has something for you. Thank you. It is now time, I'm sorry, now by the president, as many as the secretary after this meeting, a party like that, particularly one of those called 1975, which should be like second shape on June 6th, 2018, it's now time for the superintendent, the board president, the board of the recording recognition, showing you more than those recognitions this evening, Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Frazola, your remarks, sir.
Yes, thank you. We have a great visiting visitor today, and one of the other partners, the event is our opportunity to recognize both staff and students, and we're all going to be seeing presentation by three of our students, several of our students tonight. What I would like to do is just ask the knowledge, very much, I agree, when we do these recognition, we must start here for all of the family members, the honor, support them, I would ask everyone here to remain seated and not leave before we include the entire recognition ceremony out of respect to every student that's here tonight. So with that, we will begin, I'll turn over to Mr. Frazola to pick off the recognition.
Sure. Thank you, Senator, and welcome everyone. It's all awesome down at the back house, and takes the opportunity to recognize our outstanding staff and our amazing children, this time of year where that kind of gets busy for us, and we take great pride in supporting the school district to recognize the wonderful things that are happening within our school community each and every day, but once or twice a month, we get to have the opportunity to do that here in the public and share and interact as a community. I know our shared community reaction has been speaking for quite some time, I know Smalley is an advocate for this, in fact, we had a discussion I later believe about how we could bring some of the things that are happening within our schools to the community in one better form than our regularly scheduled board meetings, so I'm excited to kick this program off. We try and keep it respectful to time, but at this time, we had the opportunity to visit Newberry School during the past month and see their Genius Hour with Dr. Quinn and Ray Redder, Spearhead along with their staff, certainly Kelly Gillian who made the role there, and the Genius Hour was something that they kind of just gave it some seeds to see where it would go, and what we saw when we visited both last year and this year is just absolutely incredible. We asked for Dr. Quinn, Mr. Redder to bring a couple of presentations for our board tonight and for our community to witness, so with that, I'd like to start with Quinn and Mr. Redder to join the podium here. And introduce their students, as I said, for the senior general, sir. So they just introduced their students and the thought process behind this outstanding program, and we'll actually get to see something from our students.
Good day, everyone. This started with Ms. Gillian, did she come in first? This started with Ms. Gillian, she came to us with some ideas about Genius Hour, and we bought in, we looked into it, researched it. Kelly and Mr. Redder worked very closely together and got the program off the ground. Mr. Redder has been running meetings with our teachers who aren't interested on Friday mornings to come in and talk about ideas for Genius Hour, so this came right along with our K T program and blossomed right out of there. So I'm going to let Mr. Redder talk a little bit more about it and introduce our first students.
Hi, Dr. Quinn. So at Newberry School, once we took the idea immediately that we're on, we decided to celebrate that with a call-in conference, and on May 17th, we opened up our school to have a celebration of Genius Hour. We took 70 students that whether they volunteered to present their findings and their passion, the work that they're chasing throughout the school year to their peers, we invited some other guests as well, and it was a student-driven day, so the students chose where they wanted to go, they saw their presentations, and it gave a really great day of learning, and it's really hand-on for us and driven all by our schools. Tonight, what you're going to see are the basic two ends of Genius Hour. We have a third grade student, Ari Serebko, and she will be presenting her Genius Hour project, which is the introduction to Genius Hour. Her passion is art, and she gets some great research on the major artists, and she's going to give you a presentation at that time. When you see her presentation, realize it's her first experience with PowerPoint, can you draw and drop pictures, learn how to four-leaf goose, so there's a lot more related to it than just simple PowerPoint, and she did a great job standing and presenting her PowerPoint. The second thing that you'll see is a group of our third grade students from Miss Alaba and her whole class, they're a part of our Genius Hour experience, and they took their passion for helping others, helping the environment, and they created a drawing called Second Chance Toys, and that took their passion and tried to make a person really well. And that's the two spectrums everybody will see. So without further ado, we'll bring it up to Ari and my three girls from Miss Alaba's class, and we have Lisa Daddo, who's from Ardillo, and we have the third, come on now.
Famous artist, fire for this one. Hi, I'm on the back of that arm. My diet is an amazing theme, and I have to draw, paint, and sculpt. Autumn, the forest, paints of the crow of peace, paints of her, paints of dreams and things she notices. Born in Hollywood and moved to Los Angeles. Jasper Johns, he is an American artist, famous for painting pop art and the American flag. Jasper Johns was born in Augusta, Georgia in 1930. Jasper Johns designed several windows displays in New York. Andy Warhol, he was born on August 6th, 1928, Forest City pencil painting, he was saying, he is an American artist, he's known for visual art. He died in February 22nd, 1987, New York City, New York, he was saying. Henry Madsen, he was a French artist, Madsen is known for his views of color. He was born in December 31st, 1860, in the red pâteau, canvas, France. Claude Monet, Monet was known for impressionism, which uses small, quick brushstrokes. He was born on November 14th, 1840, Paris, France. Next up, after doing this project, I want to learn how to paint like some of these artists. I'm going to try to paint like Claude Monet because I love the way he paints. It is very fun to try the quick little bits of brushstrokes.
One of the things that we love about Ari's project is that she spent a lot of time finding true paintings that went along with her artist, and it's a process.
What was your inspiration, Ari?
I really like to draw and paint, and I'm a little good at it, too.
That's fantastic, Ari.
Next up is Mrs. Daddo, Kate Lisa, Lisa, clear of our amazing, pretty great students who can tell about Second Chance Toys.
Second Chance Toys by Isabel Cordello, Pateri, and Lisa Daddo. The idea, I got the idea from looking online, I found we got tons of plastics that dumped in landfills each hour. I saw that over 200,000 plastic bags were dumped in electrical just now, then I found Second Chance Toys will look real nice. But next, I took the idea of genius, then next we took the idea of Dr. Quinn and Mr. Redder.
A friend of ours lost her house on fire with only a few women, and drives similar to Second Chance Toys helped her and her family by giving her and her sisters toys, they got money, and much more, more things. So that's why drives like Second Chance Toys are important for us to participate in.
Some facts about plastic in landfills. About 8.8 billion tons of plastic get dumped into landfills and the ocean each year, and only about 9% of plastic is recycled. The toy drive went on for two school weeks at Newberry, and we collected 163 plastic toys or toy sets. We collected 19 garbage bags full of toys, and it took us three hours to clean the clothes, where you were in the cleaning area from 9:45 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Toys, we collected a total of 163 toys or toy sets, or 193 bags full. We got baby toys, action figures, dolls, shopping wheels, had shop toys, car, toy cars, and brunch lines. The biggest toy was a kitchen set, the smallest toy was a random Lego head that was put in with somebody's imagination here. There are also five toys we could not donate, a Lego head, another stack of three Legos, and a family one needed toy. So the benefit of Second Chance Toys is that it helps less fortunate children and families, it prevents plastic from going to landfills, and instead of collecting clutter around your house, you can have your toys while helping the less fortunate. Drives help these rare, rare, the children, helping the environment, and doing so others, and drives help also help kids all over the world, and not just the house or the clutter of the level. One man's trash is another man's treasure. This is the hope we were kind of basing our whole drive off with because the, what you think of as trash, like the, these toys that you're never going to use again, a poor family could really benefit from.
Also, children don't have toys, so it's also very important for us to give to the less fortunate.
This is a collage of pictures we took while doing the drive. The floor in the corner is the poster made, and that's one on the side is before, and the one on the side is the after. We put up bins in the front hallway and we felt it closing there, and they actually overflowed so much, so we had to still come in and make it off it.
On the bottom left-hand corner, you can see the many old materials that we had to go outside to clean all the toys.
Second Chance Toys. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ladies, wonderful job. Yes, please.
All right, so now you get your certificates, Lisa Daddo. Catherine Dury. Ed Nary, sit over.
Thank you to all our students for that, that's one of the things that we always look forward to at these meetings, and you know, when you see our young students, you know, it makes you feel so excited about the future, right? And you think that these are going to be the folks that are going to be our leaders, people, you know, making sure things go better for all, everyone. The degree of both love of art and compassion for others is just a testament to the quality and character of these young people, and I am very, very pleased, and I know our community action chair, all my board members are really, really grateful to the opportunity to see this great work and have to share that with us, so we look forward to more of this in the future. Thank you.
And at this time, Senator, with your permission, we're going to turn our attention to honoring our retirees. We've been doing that the last couple of weeks. To our retirees, I will say in advance that we studied last year our brick program, where we planted brick in our memory garden up here in your honor. The bricks are on back lawn, so we're not necessarily enough, I don't have a brick for you tonight. But we will certainly get to that brick for your keepsake, which is a caperate replica of that, as you know, we take great pride in doing that, and then when that gets planted, I will be sure to get a picture and share that with you as well. But we're very excited tonight to honor our retirees. I'm not sure Sharper will be joining us at this podium.
That's, Mr. Miller and Mr. Thor, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Miller, Mr. Thor will join us at the podium. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Bar to come up and recognize one of our red town, left fixing red or right fixing red? Nina fixes one leg, you know, and Mary, red town fixes the other leg, I have two reds, so. If Mr. Bar, please, introduce him.
This is Sidney Daver, come on up. Hello. Hi, welcome. Raise your hand if you know Mrs. Sidney Daver here. All right, look, that's me. So I might do a little turn here, just so I don't hurt my back to anyone here, but I asked Mrs. Daver to share some highlights, so if you would entertain me just for a moment, I think after giving 25 years to our district, you deserve a little time and attention here, and we know that you like the spotlight a little bit, so. Uh, yes, we can share that spotlight right now, so that's great. Yes, so I want to thank you for a long journey, began at Georgia Court College, now University in 1983. I was a little younger back then, that's the old one. And at that time, you were certified pre-K to eighth grade as a special education teacher and an L D T C, and immediately they found the diamond in the rough because you traveled off quite a distance over to Lakewood from Georgia Court College. In March of 1984, you began at Screw Street School, and began teaching then, following September, second grade at L G Clark School, and you taught over that time, grades two, three, five, and first grade over those seven years. You then left the world of public education for a brief stint for two years and worked for Hart Court as an educational consultant. That wasn't really in your veins, nor was it your calling, so Mr. Bob Andrews, the principal at the time at Aldrich School, swooped you up in 1993 as a resource room teacher. That following September, our very own Mrs. Rashawn and Gail Jordan, in September 93, scooped her up, and for 17 years as a language and learning disabled teacher, and two years as a third grade teacher, with a total of 19 years, you were at Taunton Eagle. Go Eagles! So those L D years began in fifth to eighth grade, and she taught various levels, and then five years at Taunton or in second grade to culminate those times and those years at Taunton. Interestingly enough, principal at the time, Gail Jordan, gave you the first computers and internet at Taunton School. They, yes, so you actually led the technology referendum for the entire district of Howtonton, just to let you all know that. So. Correct, correct, a visionary and a pioneer. So through the years, Mrs. Daver and her students have won various grants, worked with your students to write, illustrate, publish books, many technology programs and recognition, and you were at the time at Taunton with one of your colleagues, recognized by the S R A program and the manner through which you integrated that on a daily basis. Then after 19 years of being an Eagle, you traveled to the south side of town, to Middle School South, where you became a, what is the mascot of Middle School South?
I know this one.
There you go, okay. That's okay. I had you on that one, so that's good. So you were there and did sixth grade special education and two years in the I C R program. And then, Mrs. Frazola, it happened. During the reconfiguration, she left the world of an Eagle and a Husky, and became a Ram. We have other Rams here in attendance, Miss Engel, Mrs. Talander. So I want to thank you for becoming a Ram and welcome you personally to the Ramtown School, and you've worked throughout this district in multiple schools and multiple capacities in the special education program, have touched many children throughout your 25 years in Howell, and I personally had the opportunity to work with you at both the Taunton and Ramtown Schools, as we were both Eagles and both Rams, Mrs. Daver and myself. So I wish you all the best, I am thankful for my time with you, the many years you have served, and students of not only Howtonton, but Lakewood Schools, I wish you all the best in your journey, you've earned it in all the chapters of your upcoming life.
Thank you.
And now, now I'll ask this fellow to join us, to introduce some of our close students, our students, this fellow.
Good evening, everyone. I'm honored to be here today to honor someone, so this is Mary Rizzo, if you don't mind, come knock down, go, Amy.
All right, I'll be small first.
So again, I'm really honored, I'm really honored to be here tonight to honor someone that's so selfless, given her time, because that's the only five years for the students and family, all of us. When I first met you, we were back at the Lake School, and I quickly, and I quickly came to know someone who truly loves children, someone who is kind, compassionate, always willing to help, and someone who is above and beyond, and just thinks of it as the right thing to do. I was disappointed to learn that Mrs. Rizzo would be ending her career, but I was very fortunate to have had the opportunity to again work with Mrs. Rizzo at Adelphia School. So I know that you've given your heart and soul into our school, and for that it's been a better place. So tonight, I just want to take this time to congratulate you, wish you many years ahead of good health and happiness, and lots of time with your grandchildren. Well deserved, and thank you.
I just want to say what a pleasure it was working here at Howtonton Schools, it was a honor working with you. I really enjoyed it, it's a family, it's a wonderful place to work, and I thank all of you for the respect and the kindness of the children, respect of having the kids, how much I love them, and I promise I will do. Thank you.
Mrs. Talander will join us to introduce our next retire.
It's Maureen Hyde, this year, would you please come down a little bit here? It's my pleasure tonight to recognize Maureen Hyde for her service here in the district. She began her career here in 2002, and she served in the position as a speech and language therapist, but she also worked as a teacher of the deaf in many of our schools. Years ago, we were working on implementing a program where we could have our students, some of our students with hearing impairments stay within the district instead of having to be sent to a special school, and Miss Hyde worked very, very hard with us to help develop that program, she worked along with another one of her colleagues, Mrs. Quinn, and they worked really hard to develop that program and make sure that our students had the services that they needed here in Howtonton. She provided sign language training to staff during in-service days, and she supported her colleagues in the classroom by providing them with many strategies for helping students to communicate effectively with the staff and their peers as well. She's worked very hard throughout the years servicing her students, I know she was always a smiling face for the students who arrived in the speech therapy room, they always felt very, very comfortable having Mrs. Hyde there to support them and work with them, and they loved coming down to speech so that they could see her during recessions. So we're very happy for her that she's moving on to the next chapter of her life, and we really want to thank her for all of her years of service that she's done and watched her grow.
At this time, Dr. Heck will join us to honor a Husky, a Husky, Dr. Heck.
I was fortunate enough to have her brick up and prepare something for Mrs. Giddes and Mrs. Giddes will come down, and then I forgot my reading glasses on the other side of the counter, so I'm going to do my best here. Welcome out to Giddes. Hey, words. All right, here for teaching in Red Bank for nine years. Now, when began teaching in Howtonton in September 1989, joining her sister Janet, who had also been employed by the district for several years. She began her journey at the former Southern School, and, well, actually, it's still a Southern School, right? We just don't mean it that way, right? At this time, she taught math, grades six, seventh, and eighth. Then she joined us here at Howell Hill School, when it opened in 1994, and then when it opened in 1994, and then became a language arts teacher. Proved very valuable to the department, and Mrs. Bormer, former supervisor, decided that that was where she was going to stay in language arts. She continues to be one of the finest language arts teachers in the district. Alma then made the move to Middle School South in 1999 when the doors opened up, and continued as a language arts teacher. Mrs. Giddings has strong standards, solid rules, and consistent teaching, and her students have repeatedly returned to her saying that her teaching has been the foundation of all of their endeavors. She is not only solid and strong, but her smile and laugh is enough to light up a room. Thankfully, she doesn't laugh at me often. No matter how busy she is, she always has time for her colleagues and her students. So, you will be sorely missed in South, and you are well respected by your colleagues, and I'm lucky you have had it for the last couple of years, and I wish you with a long and happy retirement.
We'd like to our retirees that are in attendance tonight. We all owe you a brick. So, we look forward to delivering that, while you have your sweaters in your buildings. And I am confused with the microphone, so, there we go. I'll keep this one. Yep, we're going to have this angle. Come on up and join us. We have a very special recognition of a staff member who is not retiring, but has been an absolute source of pride for our district. So, Miss Engel.
Yes, I do echo that. It's with great pride that I honor Mr. Stephen Rayo. So, with the rise of digital copyright laws, data and identity theft, cyberbullying, also the overall appropriate use of technology, this year, Schoology, so for those that are not familiar with Schoology, it's our district's learning management system, they launched a digital citizenship challenge. And this initiative was an effort to crowdsource digital citizenship resources from the educational community with the goal of making them openly available in Schoology public groups. The response was incredible, to say the least. There were over a thousand education professionals that signed up to participate by submitting resources to this challenge. The submissions included everything from activities covering one digital citizenship topic to full courses covering all of them. As part of this challenge, Schoology had a panel of judges, and they used a rubric and an extensive criteria to judge those submissions. Out of the one thousand participating educators, Mr. Rayo was the top scorer among all participants in the challenge. Stephen submitted an entire digital citizenship course. I don't think anybody else did. It was designed for elementary students and includes presentations, games, extra resources, and an achievement badge for completion. As the top scorer, he wins an all-expense-paid trip to Schoology's annual conference, where... where they asked Stephen to present his submission. He also earned a seat on the Digital Citizenship Council and an organization that will create and maintain publicly available digital citizenship content. So congratulations, Mr. Rayo. And also, because I know you love your digital badges, I couldn't give this to you digitally, but he earns the number-one Model Digital Citizen badge. And these are badges that we give out to students.
At this time, I'll ask Mr. Miller, I knew who it is, and Dr. Lo, to come on up and assist Mr. Hardy in recognizing our Law Day Art Contest. Miss Hardy will explain that and introduce our winner.
The Law Day 2018 Art Contest. Monmouth Visnich, in partnership with the Monmouth Bar Association, held its annual Law Day Ceremony on Tuesday, May 8, 2018. This year, Law Day examined the principle of separation of powers as a framework for freedom. The ceremony was held in the historic General Technically Courtroom of the Hall of Records in Freehold Borough. Assistant Judge Lisa P. Thornton presided over the ceremony, and former state senator Kevin O'Toole, chairman of the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey, gave the keynote address. Judge Thornton presented facts and the students' winners of the Law Day 2018 essay and art contest. We are proud to announce that this year's winner of the art contest was Sarah Hanny of Ramtown School.
I believe... Ms. Hardy, you've got the day. Mr. Hardy is now... That's awesome. Thank you, sir. And at this time, we're going to keep Mr. Hardy up here to the student government participants. This is an amazing program. Let me talk about... Monday, no. It's an amazing program, a great partnership with our municipal government in town, and it really is a source of pride. We've been doing it for a number of years. And yesterday was just an awesome day for our students. While Mr. Hardy sits up, all our participants for Law Day, I mean, for Student Government Day, come on down first, so we're not bouncing up and down.
Student Government Day 2018. Forty-five seventh-grade middle school students participated in the essay contest entitled, "If I Were Mayor, These Are The Things I Would Do To Boost Civic Engagement," yet students involved in government and public service. The following students' essays were selected and they represented the Howletown Public Schools on Student Government Day, June 12, 2018. The students served as mayor and council members and attended, and participated in the town... Mayor Christopher Att. Councilmember Bahalia Suarez. Township clerk, Julian Rogers. Eva Palante. Jaden Bostick. Sahil Mahir. Chloe Matt. Olivia Poehl. Lauren Page. Kevin Kerakos. Luke Roberto. Gabrielle Brant. Reese Harvick. Mindy Preston. Dia Priscilla. Valerie Donzella. Pete O'Malley. Megan Yen. Ryan Pusso. Liam D. Mateo. Jeremy Carr. Abigail Bellows. Councilor of the Law of Justice.
All right, Miss Engel, for a picture. Yeah, we have this activity here. All right, let's get you guys ready in town next week. Can we get a little more organized in this? Catherine, smile big. Make it very proud, like I do every day. All right, fantastic. Follow Miss Engel and show her a thank you photo. I have to tell you, I got the introductions of the dignitaries, and I was with attendance. Miss Velma was with us last night. One awesome supply of civic understanding by these young students. The council itself said, "We wish our county council may so slowly up to our own names." A very, a high compliment from our council. Secondly, it was great to see them. Few citizens came up and raised their public comments, and they handled that, certainly proud of them, and with the public. They did a great job. So, really a source of pride and really wonderful partnership that we look forward to many more and more years. At this time, we're going to ask Charlie and Miss Nolan to come on up from north and south of the country. We have a great opportunity each year. Our friends from the Lions Club issuing a community service award. It's Mr. Johnson, come on up. Come on up, Mr. Johnson, from our local Lions. Mr. Johnson. I would like you to go up. Just introduce the meaning of the award, if you know what makes support mean.
Okay, my name is Robert Johnson. I'm a Howard Lions official, writing to Lions that are public, Aldrich and Grace Lions. We formed in 1970, so we're a hundred people of the last year. We own it in the Allen community. And what we do is basically, we give out community service awards. We give out a meeting grade with community service support. We also try to get staples gift cards to meet children in the district and the high school and the farm and gale. And the other thing that we do is, we also supply the spot cameras for all the nurses in the district. They're all trained on the spot camera. And any of my granddaughter came home, and she needed to go see the eye doctor. So, it's a good program. The nurses can do a lot of children, especially when they're non-urban. But she just takes a picture and it does a pattern recognition that pulls out and follows them very quickly. And I gave out one separate room at the Middle School North here to Isabella Martin. Okay, good. All right. Please, if you see us, say hello. And if you see us, we really need support to keep these programs going.
Yeah, the Lions Club is a great job, very supportive of the Lions. Also, Mr. Johnson's wife worked at Howlett Mills School Board for several years, so that gets some extra points with me. Now, Mr. Johnson was a great teacher here at Howlett. Just to bring back the two awards real quick. I'll present the South Award, then Miss Nolan... The North Award, then Miss Nolan will present the South Award. From Howlett Mills School Board, student that is a lot of volunteering in community homeless camps, emergency food pantry. And just the other day, I started with our peer mentors. They did a tour of Italy in our media center, and she did an amazing job as a peer mentor here at school. And that's Isabella Marcinkiewicz.
Good evening. I'm here to offer an award to a young man that's done over a hundred hours in the community, in school, always volunteering, always helping, even since the sixth grade, and has grown into a real leader in our school. And I think in today's society, the students go above and beyond. Over a hundred hours of a variety of places, mostly to help people, because that's something that intrigues and motivates that student. That should be commended. And we do appreciate everything the Lions Club does. They help many students of all different needs. And I have to say that we're very lucky to have your support and students that volunteer. So please, Jade Coward, congratulations.
First of all, again, congratulations to all of our staff and students of the Honor Race and Student Achievers. We have one more recognition. I really look forward to this. And I would like to ask Dr. Lo and Mrs. Dorferson to please join us. Ms. Rissell.
At this time, Dr. Hennick, Rissell also brought us. And our team board members are up against Charlie to make a special recognition for our team-level student achievers. This is really a great accomplishment. And who's going to go first? Dr. Hennick, who's going first, so Huskies are in the house.
There are approximately a hundred students on any one team, so if you pick for this award, it's no small feat. We had three students this year who just exemplified a combination of academics, extracurricular activities, and just being involved in everything. Not only how many nights I've spent with them would be being recognized and doing different things. And that's testament to them. So if I could ask Ryan Walsh to come down, teammate three. Sophia Johnson. And Chloe Burwood, come down, teammate one. I ensure that as they graduate and go on to their respective high school, this is just the first of many awards that these students will be receiving. As Dr. Hennick says, quite an accomplishment to be named a student achiever. Our teams do have about a hundred students on them, and they're recognized out of all of their classmates. At Howlett Mills School North, we do have four teams. And all these students, the South students and the North students, will play a major part at graduation. They'll read the students' names as they go across the stage. They'll have speaking parts, so hope you're ready to go. But it will be a big part of the graduation ceremony to the leave their classmates in, and they do deserve that honor. So from Howlett Mills School North, we have four amazing students. From Team Eight-One, Riley Stein. From Team Eight-Two, Kimberly Perler. From Team Eight-Four, Alyssa Jones. From team eight four, Alyssa Jones. And from team eight three, also our overall student achiever, that is John McParker. So congratulations to all of our student achievers, they may be going to different high schools, so wherever they're headed for high school, I'm sure you're going to do great things, and you'll make the Howard Schools proud, congratulations.
Some of these children, it's like they, we should get them to receive the test, to hear every, whatever they want, we're so proud of you. So congratulations, so that concludes our recognition for the interview, and I'll carry it back to you.
Very good, sir, thank you, and thank you, everyone, let's hear one more round of applause for Howard. At this time, we will take a brief recess to allow those folks to get home, especially our students, got to get their homework done, but you know, we will, we thank you so much for everyone setting through the recognition ceremony, we hope it goes on with our students and staff, get home safe, have a great night, thanks for coming out.
The discussion items, the discussion of live streaming and social media be brought to private access, so with your permission, we remove that up and then take the executive session in order.
Let's go ahead and put that to the top of the list, okay?
I believe Mr. Bonjovani.
That topic is coming out of community interaction, but it's been a topic that's been discussed a few times at this table, and each time postponed to the future meetings, and I think it's maybe time to try to put it to bed. There have been numerous conversations, the last night we were in community interaction, just chain of events, who had to leave early, who had to come late, we did have a lengthy conversation, although there were conversations, it took time, Mr. Nolan, although he's not on the committee, was certainly present, all of that, with Mr. Isola. There have been two separate conversations, and I think the one has pretty well been resolved in terms of the use of Facebook, and I think that we recognize the fact that, you know, Facebook is a valuable tool for, for the district to be able to put out information, and that's what it should be used for, strictly putting out information. The real question that's come before this board a few times now in discussions, has been the idea of live streaming. I was clearly admitted to the test, and I have never been a huge fan of the way that the board meetings were filmed and put on channel seventy-seven, they were frequently tough to watch, and there was a nice thing about being able to act as live, so that the community, if they choose to, can take this little meeting, can watch and see what's transpiring at the meeting. The real question has been, what to do in terms of comments or any, any ability for interaction. For those of you who've come to our meetings before and have seen this, one of the things you notice is that when it's time for public comment, you come in, what will people listen? And often will direct the community or the administration, Mr. Sanasek, when you get back to so-and-so, please call Mr. Isola in the morning, he's looking forward to talking to you. But to open up to comments during a live stream, also then gives the, the community, and it's not necessarily just our community, anybody watching, gives them the opportunity to make comments that could be, could be intentional, can happen.
Perhaps we could save that discussion for the actual discussion, from the point of view, I believe we have something that we'd like to put down there for consideration with some possible action.
Right, well, really, the motion that would come out of committee is to allow for live streaming after the administration figures out how to best do it, but to, to prevent any comments during the live stream, strictly to show the public what's happening at the meeting, that would be the motion coming out of committee.
I believe also there was a question of seeking some guidance and advice from council with the rest of us tonight, I believe that's something I didn't work at that to know. Yes, and Mr. Wooders, would you mind weighing in on the topic for us?
It's a bit difficult to look at the question of live streaming and live streaming with comments, whether the comments by non-attended participants be in writing as opposed to comments, as opposed to an interactive verbal comment. There are several lawsuits right now dealing with the question of Facebook postings and comments of the live streaming situations, whether they're, so it's a whole lot of hard fight, but as to the question of live streaming, I think it's relatively well said, there's no problem with that. There are districts that live stream their meetings and put them on Facebook, for example, and other platforms, but then they do not, at this point, permit commentary because of the outstanding question. So to break it down into two parts, the live streaming is not a problem, I think that's probably not probable, it is doable, and maybe in the best interest of the board to do something like that with the community, as far as the commentary, that's something we're continuing to look at, so.
We have a topic on the table for discussion, I know we've heard some comments come out here from the interaction, Mr. Bonjovani, any additions before I'll be answering the question?
Just my fear is that I would be afraid that somebody might try to post something that we would end up having to take down, we would have to figure out how to store that, make sure it's maintained before it's addressed to become public record, from my understanding from the pieces I've read, and thank you for the information you sent me, I just, I just think it's a bad idea personally. And the comment piece, I think the live streaming would be a wonderful idea, but the comment piece, and from the, from the conversations I've had with a few of the other board members there, and the committee, in fact, even a citizen member of the committee last night made a comment that what a bad idea, but here she, so, oh yeah, that was a very good discussion.
Well, I think, Mr. Thor, you were the original presenter of the idea of live streaming, and to your credit, it's a, it's a great idea, it seemed to be widely accepted by our council as well as our chair of community interaction, and the board, that it does have that positive effect of increasing transparency by allowing more folks to view our little versions of what we're doing here.
Which is the whole idea behind the concept, and I applaud him for considering the idea, I'm okay with the activity, with those who have commented during a live event, the main idea behind the concept that Mr. Bonjovani discussed was to create more transparency, and also those individuals who really, you know, they have best and interest in the district of what's going on, but can't physically be here, you know, to either work, family, or other obligations, wouldn't have the ability to either watch it live on their phones, or mobile device, or later on archive on the district's Facebook page, and then obviously we would have to have that archived in case it is the use for future reference, but I believe this is going to be a positive for the community, and I hope it receives more support.
Okay, good, thank you. I have a couple of questions and comments, but I'd like to defer any former first, any other comments, yes, Dr. Lowe.
I'm going to say my comments, but I'm going to say it from a place of experience and where I've been, where I've worked in other states. First of all, as a community member in our program, this board is extremely anxious to say more transparent, and I say this because we have so many opportunities, our community action committee, the citizen members, I think, or two of the state, you know, our PTA's are very involved, the community's very involved, so my concern is, I'm, you know, as I said, I just think we have a great opportunity with the things that we already have, as I travel through different states, people are amazed at even the fact that we have open mic, we have, you know, Mr. Isola, Mr. Preston, with Mr. Sanasek, if you've got questions, even at a meeting, go leave them, so this district is extremely transparent, I guess, the issue is, I don't know if we have a, from live stream, because if you're truly interested, and I've never watched a video, because I'm old, so I'm going to, but I wanted to, and when I was a member in any other state, I did watch, you know, on the regular, only because it was a topic of interest, so I just think over the years, people, women, like, we have a structure, or there's a hot topic in a vision, you have ten to have, but I, I think this board and the things we do are extremely transparent, but I mean, certainly if you want to try it, but I just think there's so many ways and so many opportunities to do so. Maybe involving the community is very challenging, but as we see, the best way to involve students, because kids bring parents, kids bring community people, here in the Lions Club, in our community organization, so, I mean, it certainly is a little surprising, but I just want to make it clear that I can see us, I think we're more transparent than any district in our account, as far as the openness and the ability for any member, whether you have a parent, a child at school, or you're just a community member, or just a taxpayer, to meet with any of our staff in the district and services. I just want to make it clear, we're not, we are very.
I agree with you on that, and I think we've done a great job, what you mentioned about the fact that we're one of the two districts in the state that as a community member, opposite of a member on our committee makes a big difference. Obviously we're prone of any chance to give individuals an opportunity to see what's going on, and if we can do it, then it doesn't cost us anything, I'm in favor of them, you know, with the council, fifty-three thousand people, nearly six thousand citizens, you know, there's a lot going on in their lives, it doesn't mean because they're not here, they don't care, they just maybe just have this life, maybe just give them a chance to follow what's going on, and particularly if they're interested in the topic.
Thanks, Ms. Nolan.
You brought up a relatively low cost, I was here because I've seen some pretty expensive live coverage, multiple cameras, multiple angles, and I, or kind of a presence we want to have on live stream, where would, you know, what kind of cost would be there?
That might be a question for our technology expert, I think, she would be willing, Mr. Isola, do you think, or maybe not, we don't want to underestimate the spot.
Respectfully, we looked into it, just to upgrade the value or the quality of the images and things, so I can report some other factors, we can take care of that, and, and I guess I'll put it this way, I think we need an upgrade anyway, so we've kind of delayed that upgrade until we made some of these decisions, so once this is made tonight, we can proceed with that, Miss Angell and I will report to operations.
Very good, so in other words, based on the outcome of discussion and the action taken, we can construct an action plan to put in a proper approach to this live streaming.
And I should say that I'm expecting a NBC News, Korea summit type presentation.
Any other, like I said, defer a comment to the real nice chance, anyone? Okay, yeah, all right, good, so, right now, I think the consensus is that, yes, our quality, despite our efforts, is not as good as we'd like it to be from the current video standpoint, and I've seen live streams on Facebook as well, if anyone has, depending on the venue and everything else, they can be very informative, very good quality, sometimes it's simply a person with a phone streaming, but in this case, we would look to utilize some form of technology appropriate for the venue, right?
Absolutely, I think the live streaming is fairly easy, but with advice of council and some discussions, we need to make sure that we meet the guidelines under our public entity regulations and government records councils for serving, so that will be added into the dialogue as well, and that would be behind the scenes almost, but we'll make sure that we're meeting those regulations as well.
Yeah, we have a much higher regulatory hurdle than an average citizen looking to do this.
What we'll do if it comes to public record, and then I have the obligation to maintain the tradition.
Very good, all right, so then, any further comments and discussion on this, then, yes?
Well, just a point to Mr. Sanasek, Reese, in terms of, again, if it comes part of the official record, and if someone, a member of the public or press wants to then look at it, what, what obligations we have to produce, what will be the, you know, definitive standard of what will be looked at?
In other words, just like any other record that is kept in the normal course of business, as they say, under government records council, it'll be subject to Oprah, and it'll be producible based on the requests.
Now, the local channel, cable news channel, apparently has school board meetings recorded, so if someone were looking for the record, would there be an official record, or they would ask for all of them, and?
My understanding is this would be broadcast on our website, if I understand the multiple conversations we have, we have had, this would be, we will also send it to our township partners, and they will choose when to run it, that's their TV station, but they do run our, our content, but this will be run on our website, with the understanding that we were, we have been discussing, is that correct?
In dealing with this, as a matter of research, over the last couple of weeks, I've pulled up a few different districts to see what they did, and live streaming it in many ways, although it's also live, so a person can watch it as it's happening, a lot of districts will then take it and put it up on their YouTube channel, if they have a YouTube channel, or they'll put it on their Facebook, but either one of those then just becomes a record that somebody could go back and look at.
As long as we maintain it is a record and other point requests, there's two that, and then there's some other details that I would deal with in the normal course of our business.
So that just raises, what Mr. Bonjovani, that's a question, are you anticipating then putting it on Facebook or on some other source?
I think that would be the point that we would send that really to operations, so that operations and the technology department could find the best way in order to sort, being fiscally responsible and also making sure the qualities, and knowing that we would maintain this as a permanent record.
And respectfully, Mr. Bonjovani, as chair, Mr. O'Brien, president, I just scribbled some notes here, and if I could, if I'm hearing it correctly, what I'm hearing is, we would add to the agenda when we come back out, authorizing investigation and implementation of appropriate platforms to live stream meetings of the board in accordance with discussion and advice of council.
Right, that sounded like a good motion, yes?
I didn't mention comment, so I would say without comment, at this time, yes.
All right, very good, with that modification to the motion, we have, we have a motion?
Yes, I believe it's six, I think.
We'll put it on the agenda as day six, all right, very good, you have consensus, all right, thanks, good discussion, all right, thank you, everybody, all right, Mr. Sanasek, I believe?
Please note in the motion, for immediateness, recognizing you will be calling the meeting back, the items this evening will be a two-dimensional hit appeal, personality superintendent email, the hit report, as the intent to the principal cabinet, and a commander of the unit on technical communication play, the board is in executive session. Mr. Sanasek? Yes, as the board administration is making my way back to the decks, so the board is back in session, shall we begin the minutes, sir?
Please.
Move it, second please.
Move it.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjovani.
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Dr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Mall?
Yes.
Mrs. Mandano?
Yes.
Mrs. Obrson? Mr. Thor is out of the room for a moment, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
The minutes are approved, eight votes in favor, nine opposed, with the one that has the room noted for the record. Now, for the board president's comments, President of the board, Mr. Timothy O'Brien, your comments, sir?
Due to the latest in the hour, the fact that you were in a very virtual meeting, and I would like to take one of the board members, it's not a very important question.
Thank you, superintendent reports, Mr. Isola.
Thank you, sir, just some quick business here, required due to reflect to the board and to our community that New Jersey K-SAC monitoring process has been completed, you will all get a receipt of a copy letter from the Department of Education indicating that this word ninety-four has a possible one hundred points, the six points that were not outlawed were due to test results from the excess of three years ago, that's just the way the cycle works. Every point that was qualitative in its assessment, we've earned, the letter indicates that we are considered a high-performing school district, and that we... that we are considered a high-performing school district, and that the, uh, the commissioner will certify with the State Department, State Department of Education, that we are providing thorough and efficient system of education for our students, and I am extremely proud of those results. I'd like to thank, um, the entire school community, the staff, uh, that does the work each and every day on this project, we have, um, for their fine work. As I indicated in the state monitor, um, you know, welcome to hell, today will be a big celebration, we're not worried about a box check, rather than telling you, I'm sorry, it was a very truly, a very positive visit, and, uh, received a wonderful email from our executive county superintendent, indicating that he was so pleased with the visit, so, uh, congratulations to all of our staff members that played an extraordinarily important role in that process. Earlier, um, I'm sorry, we asked, earlier this week on Monday, we attended a luncheon where our ESL program recognition, uh, was conducted, where we received that recognition in front of our state board representatives, um, and we'll certainly be celebrating that and have those individuals at future meeting for recognition. As you know, we are, we talked a lot about future status, we, by the end of this week, will have all twelve schools submitted for silver status, uh, in terms of future work, we're very excited, uh, there's a lot of school districts that are now applying, trying to catch up with the leaders, uh, like Mills Towne, like Howell, in this area, so, uh, we're excited to now take our work to the next level and celebrate that with a silver recognition, silver status recognition, so, uh, I would like to thank all of the folks and Ms. Angell, her leadership in that area, and we await, uh, the review process at this point. Uh, last week, we had a wonderful alibi right here in this room, I'd like to thank the people involved with that, and it's great to see our youngsters, uh, celebrating their passion in learning, in different topics that they were in control of, so kudos to all those folks involved. At this time, I must, uh, applaud our many suspensions, uh, if that company, uh, monthly we do that, we had, and that report is coming around, there is, that report is coming out for review, and we had twenty-two out of school suspensions and eighteen school suspensions during that last period, um, and with that, sir, that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Trying to, uh, the suspensions, uh, always, uh, as, uh, are retired, or?
Uh, prior to that, and I haven't examined this, compared to last, uh, year, this period, prior to that, we were about a difference of three annually, uh, for the previous year, um, I love, yeah, correct, sir.
Thank you for your report.
Yes. The committee updates, and it has a report, sir.
All right, I'm going to start on my right, um, I know, uh, Mr. Miller, who's going to sign us, who's going to?
The finance committee met on, uh, Monday, June eleventh, uh, we had the insurance companies in for our annual renewals, um, Mr. Sannisak introduced, um, Mr. Dominic Sinelli, and Mr. Tom Fletcher from Brown and Brown, uh, they discussed with the committee our workers' compensation, insurance, which is based on a three-year experience with thirty school insurance group, he stated that it went out, he went out for competitive quotes, and it came back with a three-point-three percent increase due to higher professional and non-professional payrolls, along with a slight increase in experience model. Uh, Mr. Sinelli sits quarterly with the board, uh, office, to review these workers' compensation claims. A motion was made, uh, to recommend the workers' compensation coverage with NJSIT as recommended by Brown and Brown Insurance, and through by committee, and on the agenda this evening. Uh, Brown and Brown also gave a brief overview of the vendors that were solicited in the healthcare arena, Brown and Brown's recommendation was to continue with Horizon as the claim administrator, and Sunlight as a stock loss carrier, there was an increase from two thousand two seventeen, two thousand eighteen, a three-point-five percent, which is well below the trend, and much less than school health, uh, benefits, which is showing a thirteen percent increase. A motion was made, um, for the contract for the help to continue with Horizon, is recommended by Brown and Brown, and the committee is sending that to you this evening, which is on the agenda. The recommendation for prescription, um, is a recommendation to go with Maxor Plus, um, the company offered the best package and most consistent tripe record, and Brown and Brown is saying that the transition will be seamless, and new cards will be mailed out to the employees. So a motion was recommended for the prescription to go to Maxor Plus, as recommended by Brown and Brown, and that is on the agenda for approval this evening. Um, Brown and Brown, um, went on to discuss the dental insurance, they are going to be the new broker for the dental, our last year's renewal was at a five percent increase in premium on the second year of the two-year contract. Brown and Brown was able to negotiate a zero percent increase for a two-year contract with Delta Dental, so our petition for, uh, Delta Dental for two years, um, is also on the agenda this evening for approval. Uh, Mr. Sannisak, then introduces Mr. Michael Saber, who's the district's property insurance team, reviewed different lines of the cur, of coverage, and, uh, changes, uh, that were provided to the committee. Uh, Richard Knowles recommended renewal with the covered carrier Utica, there was a decrease in premium over two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, of nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. A New Jersey School Insurance Group was the only other company who claims to make the competitive quote, and they gave it slightly higher, and it's like a three-year contract, so we continue with Utica. So that is on, also, the agenda for approval this evening. Mr. Sannisak did continue on to discuss, um, C D, and the lack of information as regards the C D numbers, and a possible July first shutdown of the state, um, and some maintenance reserve projects to review and discuss. Right now, um, the legislators are stating that there could be a possible cut of ten-point four million to ten-point-seven million dollars adjustment, eighty, over seven years a sweeping plan goes through for Howell Township, um, so hopefully we don't see that, um, cut, and in the first year, it's probably about four hundred thousand, um, so hopefully we don't see that, except, um, the transfers are also recommended for approval, they are early in the chapter, the minutes for April twenty-third were reviewed and approved by the committee. Um, recently, I attended an in-service, uh, for our dean, which was a teacher expo, um, it was a wonderful experience to see the teachers put out the projects that they worked in on their personal learning, they did a great job. I also attended yesterday the student government day, voter day, and last night, the students did a terrific, a terrific job, and you see, uh, this evening, all forty-five students, I believe, the ones for students, I'm like, and, and your report?
Uh, Mr. Miller, um, you pointed out an interesting number, like comparison for the, uh, the difference in the cost of healthcare premiums in this district, about three, three-point-three, and the state health plan?
Thirty percent.
Uh, fairly significant difference, obviously, it should reflect the, uh, sad, the district working on the, uh, the.
That was definitely to the work of each D E A, and, and before, in our last negotiations, the great box check that we had.
So we had a pretty significant avoidance of costs in our, our staff, and we're going to make that through, through the process. Um, Mr. Sannisak, for our family, what was the average savings?
The infusion premium on our plan is about twenty-nine thousand, the, uh, actual premium on the, uh, state health plan is, is forty thousand one hundred, I think, so we have a ten thousand dollar differential, uh, between that, and, and that would equate to about thirty-five hundred dollar savings on chapter seventy-eight to the top of I T.
That's, uh, it's a good savings, our, our work is paying off, and therefore, you'll spend more money studying education as opposed to studying the experiment. So, uh, again, good work, thank you, that's one we should, uh, know. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Community interaction met, uh, last night, as I indicated earlier, attendance was somewhat scattered, who, who was late, who had to leave early, had to leave early. What happened was, uh, Mr. Isola gave pretty much the same report that he gives here in the evening, uh, we mentioned a little bit about the budget, in terms of still not having final numbers based on what's going on, similar to what Mr. uh, Mr. Miller just discussed, we talked about the live stream, and we certainly talked about that in length earlier this evening. Uh, there's another piece, just that, and, and I know that there's a discussion, I know later on, they will address this a little bit, but I do want to point it out, uh, one of the things that we saw earlier tonight was, uh, those students from Newberry who came to demonstrate what they, uh, did with the G S A R presentation, and that was just an incredible day, I had the opportunity to attend Newberry the day they were doing their presentations, it was wonderful to see students teaching students all different kinds of things, we saw two great presentations tonight, but one of them was, for example, a student teaching us how to paint with proof, just all different kinds of things, physical things, how to stretch out before dance classes, I mean, just the, the number and the different varieties, but we've often talked here about, and it comes out of community interaction, we've talked about what happens here before the board meetings, and it's wonderful to have a child singing the national anthem, but it's also a great opportunity to do the community interaction piece right here at the board meeting, have teachers come in, demonstrate what they're doing with new science programs, have them demonstrate what they're doing in classroom, have students come in, and demonstrate some of the things they're doing on their own or learning in the classrooms. Um, so, uh, I'll say it was a little bit of a discussion, but that has come out of community interaction, and I think we saw a good demonstration of that tonight.
Education meeting, committee met on June fourth, um, we had, uh, curriculum updates, the language arts literacy, the language arts literacy and science department has joined together to, uh, to wake up at meetings. Language arts literacy and science focus was to show the commonalities between the two disciplines, two subjects. Online self-directed modules for math were created in an effort to support qualifying students transitioning to higher level math. Um, Carly Carey Kennedy, eighth grade special education teacher at middle school South, presented her sabbatical proposal to the committee. Proposal would create cross-curricular, cross-curricular performance tasks and assessments for middle school students. Teacher models created for interdisciplinary performance assessments, monthly meetings with administrators for collaboration on the assessment. Care academic year at full salary beginning February first, the committee voting announced that we should recommend, um, Carly Kennedy for the upcoming year sabbatical, and that's on the agenda for tonight. Um, we have a presentation, uh, Lifelines, a Suicide Convention Program, it's a comprehensive, um, program that targets the entire school community, providing much suicide awareness, materials for administrators, faculty, and staff, parents, and students, so beginning spring twenty nineteen, school councils in health, teachers will be working in collaborations to deliver the curriculum to students in grades six through eight during health class. Additionally, school psychologists, social workers, uh, school nurses, school counselors, and district sacks will be trained in interview techniques. These support staff members will also be given specific practical guidelines for making effective referrals to community resources, and administration will be trained in updated policies and procedures. Um, Mr. Isola spoke about the Q-SAC, um, the visitors actually took place on Thursday, May thirty-first, we're in compliance, um, the team consisting of the county superintendent, once he got into the classroom, she was thoroughly impressed by what we saw, so are compliments to our faculty and staff. And so our next meeting on the committee will be held in July, the date to be determined, and we also approve their minutes for the April ninth, April ninth, twenty eighteen education committee meeting. Operations has not met until our last meeting. Our next is the eighteenth, Mr. Sannisak, and?
The twenty-fourth.
And I was prepared to get, next, February nineteenth. Um, I, I did attend the spring law forum yesterday with Mr. Sannisak, uh, points of discussion included, uh, school security, the new path to crash resolution, search and seizure, especially as far as e-cigarettes, and all those updates on, on current cases. Um, it's a very informative and interesting day. Um, and as, as discussed, we said, we have received the report from educators regarding food services, um, the preliminary report indicates that exploring access would be in the best interest of the district, and especially since school funding issue is still so up in the air, um, we do think it best to move forward with the R F Ps at this point. And, and, and.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Policy committee is scheduled to meet, uh, on July tenth at seven P M, so it's a nice meeting there. As liaison to the Health, Township, Education Foundation, I just note, as we know, that the Race to Educate, which was coloring this year, finally did take place on, on Saturday, we had two postponements, but we made it the third time. The most important thing following that now is the, uh, the foundation board met last night and approved the grants coming up for next year. So already, the Bill of Mine Scholarship Grant has already been awarded, and eight additional grants are going to be given, and again, this is, shows the hallmark of this district, the outstanding work of our educators, who come up with the ideas of what can be done to innovate the programs in our curriculum, and then to implement them. Our teachers know what our children need, they help to make it happen, and these grants, again, will, you know, take place, and again, I know they'll have a date come September or soon thereafter, but they'll get recognized by the board, so that's really special. Uh, I do want to mention and really follow up a little bit, copy, Mr. Bonjivani said, and I know we often point out, I attended the knowledge expo a few days ago, supported it too, and, and, what fascinates me is we see how our students explore different things, have different interests, whether it be art, or music, or science, or sports, and how they're able to then put together these projects and then speak to the public, to us, parents, everyone, explaining what they've done, and again, it goes back to the, again, what we often say, we have the play, we have the passion and the purpose, and so we see our students begin to explore, follow their own interests, whether it be, they want to look back on cameras, or they want to understand how the cross works, or one of the students was showing her work with tap dancing, showing the history of it all, then demonstrating it and the like, it's just fascinating, and then it all builds, and they're able then to follow their interests and build on their knowledge base, so that was really exciting. Uh, turning to the Legislative Advocacy Committee, we met this afternoon, uh, two issues, one that of course is of great interest and concern to all of us, and we talk about this, is the issue of protecting our students and their safety, uh, with the point about the fire alarms, about having a ninety-second delay, uh, because we're concerned about what might happen, and what has happened in a few instances where the alarm gets set off, and people who are intent to do great harm to our students, they use that as a measure to, to hurt our students. So we, we are discussing this, and Mr. O'Brien, as our president, uh, actually spoke to a assemblywoman, J C, many of us were at the conference, the Guard State Coalition, a few, a couple of weeks ago, and Mr. O'Brien spoke to a assemblywoman, J C, explaining and expressing our interest in this, that we may very well like to come back to her with the request for legislation for protection in this area, and so that's in the works, I know Mr. Sannisak has been in contact with, uh, their office, and we, as a committee, and Mr. Sannisak really could fill us in on this in greater detail, uh, we're working with further discussions between the police department and fire people, to try to see how we can best put this together, but we basically think that this will, you know, our position will be, you know, uh, cemented within a short period, we'll bring it back to you, and then whether it has a good operations or anywhere else, we'd be in a position to then speak with the assemblywoman. And then whether it has a good operations or anywhere else, we'd be in a position to then speak with the Assemblywoman, Deputy Speaker J.C., and look for legislation. Mr. Miller brought to our attention that resolutions that would go forth to the delegate assembly of the school boards, that there's a deadline of September 4th for that. So the committee talked about some things perhaps that we might want to bring to their attention. Once again, I'll turn to something we've talked about at great length and we've taken action on as a board. And that's the position we have about part testing and standardized testing. And we've said this over and over again, we've taken the resolution here of saying we don't want standardized testing year by year by year, every year through a statewide assessment. That we're talking perhaps that we need it on a fourth grade, eighth grade, 11th grade basis. But that testing or assessments are ongoing through the district and that we think this is something in the direction we should go. So I'm just recapping something you all know. We already presented that letter to the Commissioner of Education who's asked for feedback. And we've gone beyond that at various conferences. You know, Mr. Mallory presented it to legislators, we've given it to the School Boards Association. So getting back to what Mr. Miller pointed out, what we're suggesting is, and we talked about this, is that we could take the work we've already done in the letter we provided and presented and put it into a resolution form that Mr. Sanzak is going to work on and then everyone can look at. And then we can be in a position to present that. We do plan to have another meeting, we don't have the date yet, but shortly with the committee to perhaps see if there are any additional topics that are of interest or concern to the board. And perhaps we actually talk about a couple of other topics that we might want to explore a little more.
Very quickly, just for anybody who's ever attended the delegate assembly or just a reminder of what happened. If a resolution does come from the boards at the delegate assembly, it's talked about there and all representatives from the different districts throughout the state have the opportunity to vote on it. If it is approved at the delegate assembly, obviously the New Jersey School Boards has no authority to actually create law. What happens is that something that's approved at the delegate assembly then becomes an issue of policy and advocacy for the association to use their legislative departments to go ahead and advocate for and to try to push the agenda. But that's really what it is. It's the opportunity to have all the districts in the state hopefully join in and say to the school boards, yes, make this your policy, make this your platform.
Mr. Garmen, the letter that was shared. Does that matter to your group currently that I'm basing?
Ah, that's a good point. I don't know, but that sounds.
Let's push it out.
Yeah, it's a good idea. Yeah, starts at home.
I do not believe it's sitting on our watch currently and feeling like it is.
At the end of the day, we can always look through the social media, maybe they can look at corporate advocacy, you know, messaging. So the community interaction.
It's looking at actual advocacy, so there's a place to do it in there.
Very nice.
I'd urge the community to access the board privacy. More utilization of our social media, SEO platform to enhance our messaging, social topics.
We'll put that on the agenda for discussion, elaboration beyond the district.
Mr. Sanzak, speaking of the website, do we have an idea in terms of when the new version of the website is anticipated?
It is in beta right now and it should be very shortly.
Anticipated August 1st to launch.
Thank you very much.
That's it, thank you.
Time for the first poll, sir. Your permission. Obviously, there are any, we can send it back to Sarah, if that's okay with you.
Yep.
Okay, where are some of that support information coming from? Comments from public mail, support comments, and just comments that we conducted in accordance with the law along with section 4.1. If it was made within the time limit, each, he also respected time and form. Would be the present report, Mr. O'Brien, and of course, the open, sir.
Please.
The comments at this time.
By the way, as we start from the top, I want to thank everyone for their patience. We had an extremely robust agenda. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien, I appreciate that. Just in case we forgot, I'm Lauren Tesaro from NJDA. And I think you're very aware of the reason I'm here. And one of the comments that I want to make is I'm very impressed with the informative nature of your committee reports. I think it's great that you spend as much time as you do paying attention to all the different interests. I'm a little disappointed however that the decision to accept the consultant's recommendation and send the food service out to bid took maybe all of two minutes. So I understand that's not an easy decision for anyone to make. However, we do request a copy of the consultant's report. I'd like to see exactly what they found to be deficient and why they feel that this program is non-functioning. Or I guess I should say nonprofit. I understand the statutory obligations that it is to be a self-sustaining program. However, in the interest of respecting the staff behind me, which incidentally have over 3,119 sick days that they have accumulated over their career. And I believe that that number is indicative of their dedication and loyalty to this district and to their jobs and to the children that they serve. And in using Mr. Sanzak's number in one of his general reports of approximately 15,000 meals per month were served, over the course of a year, 10 months, 150,000 meals that's done by 43 people in this district. And those 43 people have demonstrated their interest in maintaining a program that I think serves a need. You have a relatively high comfortable number in your free resource launch program. I think that serves a purpose. I think there are more than just numbers to be considered here. I think we need to consider the needs of the students of which you've served over the course of these years. I realize that it costs a lot of money to run any program. And today is not the day for economics to be the reason why something should not succeed, but unfortunately it is. The problem that I'm having however is I think that this deserves a little bit more time than to just dismissively submit this out for bid in a three-week period of time in which a consultant took time to review something that we still don't know what that report reveals. There are staff sitting behind me that as you know, has to be here early in the morning. I appreciate the fact that this is an extremely large district. And I know personally that you have a lot of issues here. I work quite regularly with Mr. Solan and Mr. Preston and I do appreciate their input. And I just feel that it's necessary to note that this is a program that really should be reconsidered and should not be eliminated. No matter how we have to do that, we are willing, as I demonstrated or as I spoke last time, we are certainly willing to sit and discuss that. And I know that there are some statutory steps to protect us in what we need to do while you are sending this out to bid. So I am willing to answer any questions if you have any, but I feel very strongly that this is a program that needs more time and certainly more effort of negotiation in order for this to continue. I know it has to become a sustainable program, that's our goal. And I also have to look at people who are willing to work to make it back. Thank you. I know it's late and I know that there are some people who are not comfortable with coming forward and speaking. And I'm going to invite anyone who would like to step up here, but if they don't want to, I understand it. The message that I actually wanted them to deliver was an introduction of who they are. Put a name to the face and the amount of years in which they've served. I have some people who have served 26 years, 25 years, 19, 18, 20. There are 43 members in this meeting. 30, 30. 12 years to 26 years, 30. That is not something to ignore.
We welcome, we welcome the opportunity to continue the dialogue. Regardless of the decision tonight, concurrently, the door is open. The opportunity is there, we have a labor committee, we have an opportunity to sit down with you, we will take it. We, you know, that is, if that is your intent and your purpose, the board is absolutely willing to engage in a dialogue, be it concurrent or anything else or not, to see what we can do to come up with the best solution.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I'm Arnie Joppeno, I've been with Sungeon Lee for 19 years. And I am so sad that you could just throw us away like this. I care for your children, I have your children in school. I love my kids, we love our jobs. Please, stay with us. We didn't just break up one day and say we're going to be lunch ladies. We've known it before, it worked for us and we do love our jobs.
Hi, I'm Ethan Natty, I am the in this building that puts your coffee and your victory supporter out every meeting. I, I realize we are, I've been with the district for just over 17 years. I will leave down in Rachel on week here now. You guys realize we are not just here to do lunches. A child doesn't have lunch because they come in after we're done cleaning up and saying, we need a lunch for this child, what do you have? We go and we find it. We have children in our school that will not eat what we're cooking. Would you like a cheese sandwich? Yes, I would like a cheese sandwich. You stop what you're doing and you go and fix them a cheese sandwich. I have no help in this kitchen this year. If I had my car, I could have done a lot better. With four people, five people, my home world leaves at 10 o'clock. That leaves me four people to serve 275 to 300 lunches a day, which kids don't come in and buy lunch because they don't want breaking the line because you have everybody buying sandwiches on. Okay, so back to me serving, we're running register and cooking to be honest. It's a little hard. I only know two of you that are sitting here, Mr. Isola and Mr. Sanzak. No one ever comes in and sees what we do, how we do it. Come in the kitchen, I'll give you a pair of, a pair of set holders, carry a can for us. It's not easy. So just stay with us. I mean, it's not just, we're not just here throwing food in and up and serving. We do take time and put the dishes, but we are serving, thank you.
Further comments?
None.
Do you know the comment is not closed?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Time for discussion, sir. Did you have desire to make a public comment? Please come back. We'll reopen the floor. Well, there's nothing, so there's remaining open.
Hi, I'm Veronica Pinto and I'm here to speak to our dad and my six-year-old son. This school year, he started kindergarten and it has been disastrous. He has completely fallen apart in front of my eyes. Regardless of how much communication I have given back to the district, there are behavioral problems in the classroom that are not being addressed. Okay, and if they are, they have not been addressed effectively enough to stop impacting my son emotionally. My son has gone from a very well-rounded individual, someone who loves school, to someone I have to beg every morning to go on the bus. He wakes up in a fetal position every morning that he has a stomach ache. He comes home from school with headaches every day. On April 27th, my son came home with marks on his neck. I notified the school district. This has been pushed under the rug. A week later, we came home with bruises on his arms. Again, it's pushed under the rug. The excuse I'm given is that he didn't say how this happened. My son is scared, he's scared to come to school and that breaks my heart. This is supposed to be his day, David. I'm on the bus in the morning and I go back into my house and I cry thinking of what I have done to his self-esteem, that's what I'm hearing every day. The behaviors are going to be there, I cannot say he will not encounter behaviors for the next 12 years. But what I am begging for of this district is to start using the BCPAs that we have in the district. And if that's not enough to contract out, there has to be a way. There has to be a way because I know my son is not the only one that doesn't want to come to school anymore. And this is kindergarten. Education is very important to my family. And my son's well-being is very important to my family. He wets the bed, he won't leave my side, he won't sleep in this room. He chews his hops in the racers and now he is eating them. He came to me a week and a half ago and said, mommy, I'm eating the racers. Not just the tops of the racers, I'm not actually blocking racers, he eats the whole thing. That's a problem. And we as a district have let him get this far. And I cannot tell you how disappointed I am. From being in education for so many years and working for so many different students, to know that this district that I believe in has failed him. We need to be able to come together and be able to take care of the behaviors. These behaviors are not only impacting my son, they're impacting other kids in the class. And what about the student who is having behaviors? Those behaviors, any behaviors of formal communication. We need to be able to help that student and every student in that classroom and any other classroom this is happening in. Because I cannot go one more day hearing my son describe school as disastrous. Or to hear about one more headache or one more stomach ache. To watch us close and have holes in them for chewing on them. I cannot do this. And I hope we can't because I need this district to pull it together and to work on the behaviors that are occurring in classrooms. And to see how bad it is impacting the other kids and their families. and to see how bad it is impacting the other kids and their families. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Azola, obviously, you could reach out to the board tomorrow.
I'm having contact with the board.
Thank you.
Anywhere.
Any additional comments?
The board's confident that as you've been engaged, you'll continue to engage. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mrs. Sanzak. I believe that close is probably being...
Close, it's time for discussion. There are two items for discussion in front of you this evening.
Right. We do. First discussion item.
First discussion item is Ms. Malice Carrillo from the previous, the community interaction, um, perspective.
It's now, you want to pick a role?
This is a continuation to the thought process started about two weeks ago, about reinforcing community interaction and how all committees are communicating interaction. I think the focus is that the community interaction committee should set away from what I call taking the show on the road and refocus our ways to increase our improved community interaction within each committee, as well as the community as a whole and what we have to do. A perfect example is that our operations committee, when I heard of two students writing in the first place of SA. The class that they wanted to get to the board of that, I reached out and encouraged them to present it to our community. It was one of the community students, listening to their essay, potentially acting on their student. It made me feel that our student board of that day has a magnetic spark that only needs a little fan to grow into a flame. For genius hours, and to others, examples. I think every year the meeting would be that way, and if I had a full board meeting suspended, even further by having a scan of the students here. You know, we could highlight if it came to a three-class school in each new, for example, or a different program. Um, the building administration can select students to present to committees or general assemblies. It will plus all the touches. All the ones that fit in place in each part of the building. As for the middle schools, I was thinking of having an eighth-grade student department. From each middle school, I mean, it's perhaps the revenue. To report out the 20,000 new students, part of our community name. If you listen to our reports, and then share that back to the community. You might have the session to provide Mr. Azola thoughts like the change in the order of the agenda, so that community interactions could occur at the end of the super and then the board. So the community that's here, the representatives can hear. The board president can make, you know, report with quick talking points from each committee, like a highlight reel or something. Again, to the benefit of the community then, and, you know, just if you like, it's a good start.
I think this is an excellent idea, uh, in the sense that when we have our folks sitting here in front of us, what a great way to share some of the things that we're doing. For the comments from the board on this, you have...
Yeah, I certainly not wanted to stand that committee or stop that activity, but at the same time, I would agree with Ms. Malice 100% that I've frequently, over the last year, frequently have talked about wanting to see more activities happen before the board meetings. Again, as I said earlier, whether the teachers presenting on some of the activities they're doing in the classrooms, or having students show what they've learned and demonstrating things. I think it would be great for the community to see it, I think it would be great for this board to see it. Uh, I certainly agree that, I think every one of our committees, because we do have the opportunity for people to attend the committee meetings, which you really should, and we found out that there are many, uh, many boards around the state that don't even let people come to their committee meetings. So, I do think that we can, regardless of the committee, make sure that we are constantly reaching out and saying, "Would you like to present that? How can you present that? How can we be more involved?" The idea of using the board meeting itself, as I said, most of the times we start meeting interaction in the first 15 minutes, are Ms. Azola doing a recap of the activities. Said he talks about that we hear again the same things here at the meeting. Why not try to do more of the interaction piece right here at the meeting? I also agree that I think the conversation earlier tonight about the livestream gives an opportunity for more people to see what's happening at the board, and if we're doing demonstrations at the board meeting, it's a greater opportunity for the community to see those things. So, I'm certainly, um, I'm certainly in agreement with a lot of the things you say. I think it's a great idea.
Yes, sir. Uh, we've had now two years in a row now that we've had our students' school board activities. And we've had committee meetings, and then we've seen them, our students actually participate as a committee of the hall of the board for an hour. Some of the things they talk about perhaps, and that they suggest, uh, we could follow up on in committee meetings. And again, we bring in 15 students for that, and that's magnificent. But perhaps we could cull some of the other suggestions from so many of our students and see what might be applicable for particular committees' consideration of things we're even looking at. And, I mean, it's just some sort of mechanism to follow up on that. But I mean, it's a great idea.
I'd like to add something to this as well. I think when I'm listening to the conversation, one thinks that, um, I don't think there was ever any intention to stand community interaction, I think maybe to repurpose and refocus it, uh, to operate at a macro level. But more importantly, when you think about it, we had a lot of concurrent activities and discussions going on around communication. Livestream, social media, we talked about the fact that we did that resolution, that letter, how can we get that out there? When you think about it, at the end of the day, we are, we're dealing with a lot of different things. Probably sometimes there's so many different silos, and we don't tend to think about how we can put it all together. Perhaps the role of community interaction would be to take that macro view and then pull in in consultation with the administration, how to develop messaging that we think is critical of what the key initiatives, goals, accomplishments of the board, the district have been, and are going forward in the future, both talking about what we've done in terms of outcomes from the strategic plan, as well as what we're planning to do over the next five years as we continue to deliver it. I mean, we're going to be starting a new strategic plan across at some point in the future. So if we get the message out to the community, we might be able to take that message and apply it in many different ways. It could be through social media, it could be through student interactions, it could be a lot of different things. But the point is, we're missing it because we're kind of in the forest, you know, we're surrounded by all this tree, we don't see the whole thing. If the community interaction committee could take on that role and kind of brainstorm with administration on ways to take each meeting and make it meaningful. I think the idea of the presidential marks is great, there's also probably other ways that we could, uh, you know, come up with ways to...
Well, you know, and again, it's kind of repetitive of what I said earlier, but we have, you know, look, I'm fortunate enough to sit on education and there have been many, many times out of education where I've said, "Bring it, bring it here." I mean, the presentation we saw tonight was because I was at the genius hour, and I said, to Ms. Azola, I said, "Wouldn't this be great to bring this to a board meeting?" And it happened, and it can be that easy. Really, if we just say, "Here's something going on, let's bring it here."
Maybe community interaction could pull the committees and get topics or ideas from each of the committees pulled together that they think would be worthy of community interaction, that would be worthy of bringing out to that. Become a clean house with great opportunities and ideas. That could then give us a focal point. So instead of actually, you know, you could help direct and engage the board and effectively communicate more in the opportunities that Ms. Malice pointed to. You know, maybe we can change your business to give us an opportunity to share some of the things we're doing, because we have a great story though, and why not tell it when people are here?
Well, one other piece of that really comes to the conversation is that Dorcas is championing, and he's right, is that, you know, we've talked about different locations, we've talked about different times and stuff. Let's be honest, regardless of the time or the location, that committee's been lucky to have five people show up. You know, so I do think that in terms of explaining to the community what's going on with the district, there's no better place than right here.
You know, we have a free public channel, Channel 77, that most of the times sits with a carrier signal. Has that little thing, that nice little blur of music and all that. I'd say 80% of the programming on that is just a screenshot. So, it's not that they don't have capacity to take down more product. Why doesn't community interaction take a look at utilizing Channel 77 better as well? Because at the end of the day, if you have a vehicle, why not have them receive all the product? The open mics, the other things, all the stuff that we're doing that is appropriate. We can do, go through Facebook, but we can also go through cable, because there may be folks out there who would turn on Channel 77, and all of a sudden, after they saw more programming, might actually stick around and take a look at some of the things that are going on. It's something, it's part of our right, is that the cable companies have to give us this venue as part of their deal with the state. So we are tremendously under realizing that challenge as well.
I think it'd be interesting to know how many people are in the community, even though that exists as a...
Hey, for a while there was some interest in casting meetings back in the day, at really good rates, yeah? Um, but, uh, but I can tell you that...
I'm the best at obviously sitting up here, I didn't know that was even an option.
Well, maybe, maybe one of the things is if we actually get the programming onto that channel, and we start promoting that information through our website, and through our Facebook, and through our R S feed, and everything else, maybe we can actually give Channel 77 new life of its own, because at the end of the day, people don't even know it exists. All you have to do is put it on your ears, or your headphone, and you're there. Uh, you know, so, not only speaking of course, those people who do zapping, they have to find us and find us as well. But, um, but yeah, I think, I think that type of dialogue, that type of discussion can be a fruitful endeavor by community interaction.
Of conversation with Mr. Sanzac and see what we might be able to do in terms of reaching out to 77.
Absolutely. We have a dialogue, I'm sure we can raise that.
Okay. Yeah.
Um, so, um, several parts of the conference, um, once again, I think these have been great, what we've had, recognition, and, um, yeah, I think we talked about that, we should equip it, you know, we have opportunity, and, you know, as I said, I understand this parent's going to leave, but we need to be able to engage, and I wasn't pretending we didn't do the exact same thing, but we went through a proportion of our agenda, so we tend to for committee reports, discussion, so that the community gets a chance to see. And thank you, Sam, and I know the cops and, you know, the, the time and everything else, it's a great opportunity to really do that. I have the idea of doing the presentations, but there needs to be all about equity. We have twelve schools, you could do one a month, because there's things on at every single building. And, um, you know, something I've seen in districts has gone, so we give that opportunity, both through administration...
So, Dan or Isla...
And staff, you know, about how we want to show and demonstrate that it's our DNA, it's local sound, but we have both schools, so it's all about equity. Not that, you know, the genius hour was great, but each, what's so unique about each building is their internal culture. So, I have the idea of allowing that accountability, work with the administration to work this out.
Well, there's something I heard, you know, the common thing that you see sometimes now, social media, social media technology, that's TV, and allowing each school to have better that, on there, to push that out there, what makes each school special. Chairperson.
At the end of the day, it's something that advances what we're trying to do, open the board, district, and first students, and yeah.
I think it also built us off seeing with our students.
Yeah? I mean, the great communication that we saw tonight, for example, we could turn on Lewis, and maybe they could do some creative programming on that as well.
That'd be worth a while.
Oh, yes, yes. Yes, Dr. Loma, one more.
Would be, um, I guess the committee piece, I guess would be selfish. I'd like the members chairs to talk about that and have that discussion, because, um, you know, as I said, I think this is an individual decision, it's not a bad idea, but I'd like the chairs and committee to have some discussion about, you know, how we want to, you know...
Why don't we put that on a topic for retreat? I think that would be a great topic for us, figure how we can collaborate effectively. Yeah, that'd be good, okay. You got that, Mr. Sanzac, on the topic for retreat?
Sure.
And, is it about your body, and then, Ms. Azola?
Okay. Then, probably, that one.
You'll see.
I was just saying, and it may sound counterintuitive, but, you know, the PTA is struggling to get people out to meetings, and it's pretty busy. But the other thing I was going to say is the community interaction, if you, you know, you meet the president's council that same night, so if they push the community interaction out on the, um, the PTA Facebook page, you'll catch more people that, that way. Because I know it's not pushed out much, but...
In other words, collaborate with the PTA, PTA Facebook, and...
I mean, because that, I mean, at least for two schools on, on part of that's how information is given out. So if you threw it on there, to your point, I think that's...
I would say this was that night, and I don't use this word lightly, that affect, affected those meetings. But, you know, find a way to get more people involved here, and we'll come there, you know. How can we, how can we interact more with...
I mean, I can put it on there as long as I'm laughing, but I don't know, like, I'll get the board notification, but if you don't hear, I'll post it down.
Well, before we all start posting, let's talk about how we communicate effectively, process, but I think it's a good idea. I mean, it's a very good idea. Look, obviously what we're talking about here is how can we take the tools at our disposal, platforms we have, leverage them better to do what is, that we want, is to interact, to communicate, and to share information with things to do.
Well, the one thing I was going to say, and I do, I might talk to those idea of a school each time, but the other piece is that, um, I would also, I would also like to see it sometimes be staff who presents. For example, you know, what are they doing with the next science? Where, how are they teaching that today with something new that, that most of us, most of us at this table probably, except for you, are not going to know. So there are plenty of opportunities for, you know, staff also to be presenting. Here's what's going on, here's what we're teaching, here's what we're showing our students.
I think that's on a volunteer basis, if that was something they wanted to... Yes, Mr. Melo.
That's very similar to a teacher at Exco that Cartina did, where they had the teachers set up, um, different tables with projects that they had in, on their way. So that would be something that maybe one of those teachers, uh, from Cartina would come out and share one of their projects with us, with Russell, Boyd, Chris, one that they did. They just had some great projects, and, uh, you know, if we can get that even in the other schools.
I like that, we have a lot of talent in this district that are part of teaching, so they're techs, and I think we want to showcase that.
We have the best teachers in the city.
Well, I was, you know, I just want to question the board as we go forward with this, that this is the promise of the superintendent, so we would defer to how he would want to engage with his staff in terms of interacting with the board.
Yes, so, if I may, I tend not to take the habit of correcting board members in public, but this authority creates exception, we celebrate our staff at every opportunity we get. And to know this quick response that we have the best teachers in the state is probably because he's heard his superintendent, and all of us are playful over here, huh? Um, the fact of the matter is, um, you know, throughout our town, there's some great educational programs happening, but, um, we're having a really deep and good conversation. But I have the greatest level of respect for our staff, they do great work. Many of them do volunteer, come out, and whenever asked, and a lot of stuff happens at the education committee level oftentimes. Um, I, I think we would certainly get President O'Brien, those will be pointed out on a volunteer basis, folks to come out and showcase what's happening. The fact of the matter is, I think it would be much more comfortable showcasing the success that they're having with their students.
Yes.
They're not, they're, they're, they're very, uh, you know, humbled in what they do. In fact, I encourage them, Mr. Preston and I have had multiple conversations, we want them to remember my first address, and to develop a professional arrogance, right, that is urgent, that. Um, so, Mr. Melo, now that we have a great staff, and we do showcase them, we take great pride in their work, we're constantly inviting the board into schools to see that work, um, you know, but, determining how we can get folks out in the board meetings to showcase it is great, except we appreciate the opportunity to showcase that their students and the things that are happening. My bigger underlying concern remains, um, you know, how many people watch the 76th and the 77th, and how many people are sitting here, it's a massive investment to ask for staff to do that on a regular basis. We can figure that out, though, and we have great people, and they'll do it. Um, I think we still have to work on figuring out how that engagement really looks. I think our new website can be also, I think, off... I think our new website can be helpful, I think our push open mics has been good, we scaled the back, because it was a lot last year, we're releasing our new open mic this week, I thought it would be released today, some really great segments there, but we have to somehow get that captured for our community to see the work that's happening. Again, like you said, Mr. Thor, you know, you said the day is where you truly wear some of the things, right? So the learning curve for the community, and you've been very vocal and clear, people are busy, right? You know, we certainly hear when there's a concern, it's great for yourself, but, well, not too many people come out and say thank you, you know, it's just not, they're busy there, again, they're at the national side. So I think the challenge that lies at head here for community interaction is, is yet so we can channel things here, the board meeting, our beautiful forum here, that's great, I'm all in favor of that, but I think there's still an underlying message, because how many times have we voted, we voted to release a project, Act of Mission, Billings, why don't we put out a survey, how many parents know that Act of Mission is coming? And that is very few. So we have to figure out how to get to the core of communication and keep a active chain of communication with our community and its talent. So I like everything that was said, I just don't think that there's a magic bond here, I think we have to continue to have a way at it and trust me, your administration and your staff is more than willing to partner and do this.
I was, my whole point with showcasing was, you know, if I wasn't sitting up here in this position where I have the privilege going around to the schools and seeing what's going on, you know, and if I still just sit as a member, you know, my kids are our even, I may not know exactly what great teachers at all Richard does, because I may have people invested in it, I actually go in there and we could maybe rotate it.
Well, I would say, if we could just take a step back from this, because there are certain, look, I believe we have such an incredibly strong collaborative relationship with our administrative and we are fortunate to have the best staff in the state, as evidenced by our QSEK results and by everything else that we've seen. But I think it would, it would be noble to realize this, point out that, as a lot of things we could do better in terms of community interaction, but as we go forward, we would leave to our superintendent, the how our staff interacts with us here as a board, I think that we need to focus on what they do in the classroom and work with the students and have the outcomes. And then as we go, we are very welcome, I know, when invited by the superintendent to go into those buildings, as board members, and see the work. And I think that's the more appropriate way to actually see it happen as opposed to here, because here, when we're pulling a teacher out of isolation in the classroom and to do something here, I don't necessarily feel that captures the impact. The impact of a great teacher is when they're actually interacting with our students, and that's when you see what they're doing. And it's not so much what the teacher does, it's what the teacher helps the children achieve, and that's really when we see the magic. So from my point of view, I'm very comfortable, whatever you feel, you know, but I think that what we're doing right now in terms of board members being invited is...
Yeah, they certainly don't, we'll, we'll continue to showcase our school district right here, I'll be no good with that.
Of course.
We have fantastic folks and students and families, we have much to celebrate, and I believe celebration of the great work, but I also think there's some other core issues that we have to continue to grapple with, if we truly want some of the nobles happen at all in the general, I think that's the challenge.
And I think circling back to, bringing us back to conclusion, that's what the point of tasking the community interaction to take up those issues and maybe to have this as a topic of the retreat within approach.
And certainly, I do think that we can, as the board has made so well as a chair, we can talk about strategies and we can...
And collaborating.
Teacher, uh, owes a launch of strategic planning in this area, you know?
Right, absolutely. Do I have anything to firm on this topic? Do we understand that community interaction will be tasked with working with administration on looking at some long-term strategic ways to enhance communication along the topics discussed tonight? Maybe bring it further back to the discussion in retreat? Would that be fair? Okay, great. Concludes that discussion and thank you, good discussion. Anything else?
Second discussion, just a little bit of time for board stuff evaluation.
I'm not sure it's going to end tonight.
Um, the board stuff evaluation is, we are at that point of the year when we need to start working on it, so we have to retreat on July 21st, I believe. So I recommend that the board complete the self-evaluation online by July 13th, which is a month from now, which should give us enough time to have it ready for retreat on 21st.
Excellent idea. And again, I want to thank you, so I asked Mr. Miller to take a point on this.
Yes, he's on the same page.
And he's done an excellent job. So thank you to Miller for your efforts on keeping us on track.
Very well. And then, you know, it's already updated, just goes right off.
Yeah, the board evaluation is already open. Every board member should, when they have an opportunity over the next week or two, log in and begin the process of completing it. If you have questions, on the board of social value, you can reach out to myself, you can reach out to Mr. Sanzac. You know, the bottom line is, you know, let's get the work started and then we can take it up in retreat. Yes?
I may recommend that Mr. Sanzac's office, George, maybe send a Monday reminder just automatically to our...
I think that's a good idea. How about a Monday, Mr. Sanzac? So we get...
Four Monday reminders, one each for the next four Mondays.
And you'll give me an update on, on how it's progressing and completion.
Form you of how many people have applied to the Monday of the month.
And part of it, Sanzac, you must tell us all, complete the evaluation also.
Correct.
That'd be good.
All right, very good. Thank you. Actually, we had some pretty good discussion for close to midnight, so kudos to everybody for staying focused. All right, that concludes our discussion.
It is now time for the consent agenda, sir.
Yes. Okay. Anything special to be read to the record?
I have a lot, but if you can move on a second here and then I will...
I got a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Mr. Miller, seconded by Mrs. Oberst.
Please note the following readings. On six, and you have this in front of you, but I will read it in for the public record. 6015, insert the vendor Delta Dental. On 6016, insert Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield and Maxor, M-A-X-O-R. On 6017, insert the vendor S-N-J-S-I-G. On 6018, insert the name Utica National. On 6019, Crystal Clear Glass, Al New Jersey, in the amount of $23,245. On 6020, insert a credit lock supply company, Secaucus New Jersey, in the amount of $14,410.93 in wiring to Franklin Griffith LLC in the amount of $8,717.96. Out of executive session, and we did mention A6 earlier, but I'm going to add other ones first and then add A9 at the end. A6 will be approved to transfer of elementary school principal, approved to transfer of Brooke Napoli, vice principal at Greenville School to the position of principal at Club School at Step 4, $125,300, under principal salary guide effective July 1, 2018, replacing Diana Rashad. A7 will be elementary school principal, approved to transfer to Greenfield Prep, vice principal at Newberry School to the position of principal at Memorial School at Step 3, $123,050, under principal salary guide effective August 1, 2018, replacing Allison Keeler. I'll stop for a moment to say, they are in the audience. A8, authorize the solicitation of food service vendor competitive contract, authorize the solicitation under competitive contract law in accordance with NJSA 18A, Code 18A, that's 4.1, to evaluate potential food service vendors. And then A9, from earlier discussion, authorize investigation and implementation of appropriate platforms and livestream meetings of the board in accordance with discussion and advice of council, not including comment. With your permission, sir, please.
Please.
May I take that away? Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Oberst?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes, with the following extensions, A6 and A7 of the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Love?
Yes.
Mrs. Mall?
Yes.
Mr. Ben Gata?
Yes, except I know A8.
No, A8, thank you. Mr. Thor?
Yes.
Mr. Bon Javon?
Yes, except I excuse myself on A6 and A7.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
The consent agenda, any agenda and the readings are approved. Nine votes in favor with the extensions and no vote on A8 noted for the record. It's now time for the second vote on that, sir. Your permission.
Forza.
Whereas, now that's fortification, determined the comments may last 45 minutes and will be conducted in accordance with its final, may be noted in the clear list each. The officer would respect the time of the former, the president of the board, Mr. O'Brien, heads the board be open.
Please.
Other comments this time?
The right, Tisaro NJPA, just one comment. At reviewing the board agenda for this evening, I tally roughly a little over $2 million in costs or expenditures if you're about to pay out. With the exception of a new roof and a couple other issues, $2 million, is it necessary to spend $134,000 to put new asphalt and paving in parking lots? And yet we still talk about eliminating food service. Thank you.
Additional comments at this time?
Speaking of ceremony, I think that was...
I'd like to give applause and congratulate the chief of principals.
I would like to do that. Thanks, sir, for that early afternoon.
Thank you for the people's support and I think the future of our district remains bright, losing two fabulous people, Mr. John Muskeeler and Hot Fats as superintendent, how you do replace that, to see the upcoming talent, not only these two folks that are sitting here, but the enormous talent that talent possesses. We have much to be proud of, of folks who work with our chief of principals and all of principals here.
Absolutely, absolutely wonderful. And again, congratulations to both of you, thank you. Now, with that, Mr. Sanzac, I believe we are waiting for...
For Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you, and a motion, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.